Ladies and gentlemen, may I have your attention, please? My name is Alfredo Gutierrez. I am the president of the Maricopa Community Colleges Governing Board, and I want to welcome you to this special meeting of the board. Before we begin, I would like to ask Board Member Joanna Haver to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to welcome all of you as a preface to this special meeting. Let me say the following. This meeting is to consider a resolution. There is in your packet a white version, that is, the original version, and a yellow version. The yellow version is a proposed substitute that could be considered in our January meeting as opposed to the original. I wish to point out on the proposed substitute that a phrase was inadvertently dropped out by the magic of technology that would have read, I believe that would have been line 69. I'm looking at Dr. -- Line 70. That would have been after line 70 and would have talked about the preservation of the identity of each of the colleges. So that would be added, that drop would be added when it would be, if it is, and if it's moved and considered at our January meeting. Let me welcome you, and let me say the following by introduction. All of the authority, all of the powers that are delineated in both of these resolutions, or proposed resolutions, is already by policy in the hands of the chancellor. She may in fact proceed to do any and all of those, or exercise any and all of those powers. And that hasn't been the case for many, many years, perhaps since the inception of this district. The reason we are here considering a resolution is because we are now discussing a change in the structure of the colleges. It is a transformational change, and it is an important change. And it is a change that demands transparency. It demands that we simply not proceed to implement it in the normal way we do business at the cocoon we hide out at in Tempe. It shouldn't be done in that fashion with five or six people in the room. It should be done in a fashion of reaching out to everyone, to the public, to staff, to faculty, so that everyone is aware of what the chancellor is considering and what this board is considering as well. And that's why we're here. It is not because we are proffering greater authority on the chancellor. We're not doing that. Policy already gives her that authority. It is because it is appropriate in a district that has served this community with excellence for 50 years, that if it is going to have a change of this magnitude, that everyone be involved in at least being aware of that change. And that's why we're holding these special sessions. All of you have received, or should have received, one of these yellow small documents. It's an indication that you want to speak. During the course of the meeting, if you fill it out, they can continue to come. Everyone will be heard. Let us, let me stress that at our first public session, there were a number of people who were quite hesitant to the very last minute, felt that somehow in the course of the meeting, something they wished to say, something uniquely so, had not been expressed earlier. And they felt that at the last minute before we close, that they should say it. And we welcomed them to the microphone. I would urge all of you who feel you have something to say to fill one out. You can always ask not to be heard if you think that and believe that someone else has expressed that which you would have said. But I would encourage all of you to give us your thoughts. The Attorney General has given us limitations on what we can do, and I will read those at the appropriate time. But those limitations do not allow us to engage in a conversation with you. But those limitations do not prevent us from hearing what you have to say. And I want to assure you that one of the reasons there are changes and proposed changes to the resolution is because we heard. We heard some of the people who spoke at our first meeting. We are listening. And subsequent to this meeting, most of us seem to hang out and listen to more. So we will be here. So I urge you again to please participate. Having said that, this is the second reading of the resolution. Let me explain that the yellow sheet would be, if it is offered, a substitute amendment. There could be further amendments as well, based upon this hearing this evening. So having said that, I want to turn to the next item on the agenda, which is, well, if there are no comments from other board members.
I would like to say there, I identified 11 seats right here. Come on down, plenty of room for you.
So this is not an auction. We're not going to, you're not going to have to bid on anything. You can come on down. And you didn't win a prize either. You thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. Ladies and gentlemen, the mayor of Mesa is with us today. I wonder if he'd stand and be recognized. We can't see him. He's hiding. At this point in the agenda, let me ask the chancellor to address all of us. Chancellor Maria Harper Marinick.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. I would like to approach the podium.
Of course.
Good evening, everyone. Is that on? Yes. Thank you for being here tonight. When there is a party and people show up is actually a good thing. So that means that all of you care deeply about our system and what we do to serve the community and serve our students. So we thank you for being here tonight. And thank you, Ms. Gutierrez and members of the board, for allowing me an opportunity to provide some remarks. And before I, so I'm choosing my time. I'm choosing to use that time to share a little bit about the vision that we are proposing moving forward for the district and some of the changes. And before I do that, I would like to show a video that we have prepared that is a good reminder of who we are and what we do to serve the community, and also a celebration of the things that we do very well. So if someone could run the video, that would be great. Thank you.
We live in an exciting time. Our region has seen explosive growth over the past 50 years. New industries and businesses are creating incredible opportunities. Technology is developing at lightning speed. Increasingly, higher education has become necessary to compete for high-quality jobs and is an essential component to our state's economic success. Meanwhile, Maricopa Community Colleges has been and will remain a key partner in Arizona's educational landscape. Our role in this story began in 1920 when Phoenix Junior College opened, serving 60 students in a six-mile radius. As population boomed, we added colleges, each with a goal of serving residents in its immediate geographic area. Today, Maricopa Community College District is the largest educational institution in the state and one of the largest community college systems in the country, educating more than 200,000 students annually at 10 colleges and multiple service locations throughout the valley. In addition, Maricopa Community Colleges is the state's largest provider of workforce training. We are a key transfer partner to not only our three state universities, but to institutions of higher education across the country. Maricopa Community Colleges is also a vital player in the governor's Achieve 60 initiative, which seeks to make Arizona more competitive through the power of education. This is our unique challenge, our incredible privilege, and our serious responsibility. While we once relied on a combination of state aid, tuition, and property taxes to fund student services, state aid to Maricopa Community Colleges has been eliminated. Population growth in our region has slowed. Advances in transportation and technology have changed how students access education and training. More and more students are enrolling at multiple colleges during the same semester, reflecting greater mobility throughout the valley and an increased interest in online classes. What has not changed, however, is our commitment to serve our community through quality education, services, and innovation with every new step. Continued student success demands it. So to make our district even stronger, we pledge to take many steps toward positive transformation within the weeks and months to come. We will emphasize the role of technology in the educational process, including real-world training, online coursework, and collaboration with industry. We will continue to meet the challenges of financing higher education in response to changes in state funding, taxes, and tuition. We will prepare students for even greater career success. We will make workforce training programs more agile for students and employers. We will foster an entrepreneurial spirit in our students, employees, and community. We will strengthen the ties between our district and the communities we serve. We will reach out to local business, industry, and government leaders who reflect our 21st century environment. We will maintain our commitment to provide quality and personal interactions between students and instructors. Together, we can ensure that the Maricopa Community Colleges and the valley we serve are poised to thrive today and well into the future. We look forward to the journey.
Thank you. So let me elaborate a little bit about some of the themes that are included, excuse me, in the video. I think there is no doubt for any of us, those of us who have been part of the Maricopa system for many years, like I have, 25 years for me, that we have a very strong record of success. We have eight of our 10 colleges have been recognized by the Aspen Institute as among the top community colleges in the nation. We have been recognized for our financial prudence with AAA bond rating for many years in a row, something that very few institutions can actually claim has happened to them. And I think many of you know that we are one of the primary providers of workforce development in the state of Arizona, not just for Maricopa County and the cities that we serve. So many things are working very well. We have some of the most innovative and talented, committed faculty members and staff. That's how great things happen in the system. It is a place that we are all proud to call the place of employment and the place of service to the community. However, there are many other ways in which our institution has not changed. There are the structure of Maricopa policies and procedures that actually can be traced back almost to the 1962, when the system was created. And certainly, if not 1962, the '70s and the '80s. So I think we know that while many of the things that we do are creating, impacting very positively the communities, that times have changed. We saw some of that in the video. We don't have the resources that we had before. The county is not growing in the manner that the county was growing in the past, where we expected an increase in enrollment of 10% almost every year. That has not been the case, and that's not going to be the case moving forward. So we need to look at different ways today to continue to serve the community in the manner that is expected without duplicating effort at some of the colleges. So what we are proposing is that we will take a look at the organizational structure of the system and some of those policies that I mentioned to ensure greater efficacy, improve the ways that we serve the community, and then make sure that our new strategic commitments are accomplished in the manner that is expected from us, for us from the board. And those strategic commitments are, we commit to the community that we are going to build a thriving community through access and student success, that we are and want to be a driving force for economic and workforce development in Arizona and Maricopa County, and that we will attain recognition as a leading innovator among institutions of higher education. So some of the environmental and institutional changes driving our proposal for restructuring were things that you heard on the video. So I want to perhaps repeat some of them and add some other ones. Something that has changed dramatically is the way the county looks today. Many of us, I came to Arizona, to Phoenix in 1982, and at the time, there were very distinct communities and a lot of empty land between one and the next. And now we are spread, and we have ways of transporting ourselves around the county that did not exist when I came. There were two freeways, I-10, I-17, neither one of which took me to ASU, where I had to study. So some of the other changes that we have is the traditional way that the colleges were created was to serve a six-mile radius. And those very distinct service areas are not really a reality anymore for the reasons that I just said. We have already made changes in our system to financial aid, student services, marketing and communications, and recruitment. And those efforts are because we know that we need to improve how we serve our community. We have expanded system-level functions, especially in business services, informational technology, and human resources. We know that the transportation today, it may not be great if you're going from one end of the East Valley to the other end of the West Valley. But if you're transporting yourself, moving within a region, it's certainly much better today than it was when we have less access to the colleges. We have changing student enrollment patterns. And now we have actually thousands of students who attend more than one college at the same time. Some of them two, some of them three. Some of them are not only two or three of our colleges, but at the same time attending one of the public universities. So that is something that has changed from the way that it used to be in the past. The population growth and the sprawl also leads us to approach community outreach and relations in a different manner. We have now sophisticated regional economic development organizations that did not exist in the past. And those organizations actually cross service areas for the colleges. We have the East Valley, for example, Partnership. And I see John Lewis, thank you for being here, John. And there are multiple colleges that are involved in that association. So what we're proposing is, take the county, and instead of having distinct areas with the six-mile radius for services and decision-making, that we would divide the county in regions that are based on a geographic location of the colleges. So in that proposal, we would have, for example, the east region. And the east region would be served by Mesa Community College and Chandel Gilbert Community College. That we would have a north region, served by Scottsdale and Paradise Valley Community Colleges. That we would have a west region, and that would be served by Glendale and Estrella Mountain Community Colleges. And that we would have a southern central region, and that would be served by Phoenix College and South Mountain College. We have two other colleges, because I only mentioned eight in the regions. We have Rio Salao College. Rio Salao has been our distance education college for, actually, from the inception of the college. Now is one of the primary providers of online education in the nation. They probably serve more students online than many other institutions. Also, when Rio Salao was founded, they had a mission of providing corporate training. And we have restored that mission of the college by moving what is the function of the Maricopa Corporate College. It's now under the coordination of Rio Salao. So Rio Salao would be expected to continue to grow online and also improve and strengthen what we do for the business community in terms of customized training. And we have Gateway Community College, which is also located in Phoenix. And Gateway has the many, most of our workforce development programs, also has responsibility for what we call the Skill Center. So at some places, that's like the trades, the technical training. They house the Incubator, which is the Center for Entrepreneurial Innovation. And they have also hosted the Small Business Development Centers. So we have responsibility for the SBDCs, actually for the whole state of Arizona. So Gateway would be expected to continue to grow our offerings in workforce development in a coordinated manner with all of the other colleges, for credit. We also hope that by having a regional approach, that we strengthen the relationship we have and should have, will have, with our K-12 partners. That we know that we need to do more together, that we need to do better together, and that it would be easier to approach the partnerships and the things that we need to offer to students. So we have more students graduating from high school, ready for college, and actually coming to college and achieving a goal of having a post-secondary degree credential or diploma. And then, of course, transferring to the university. So that is the goal that we have, that while this will yield some savings, salary savings, because we would have, instead of 11 college presidents, we would have six. This is not about that only. It is about strengthening what we do for the community and the salary savings, which with the change from 11 to six presidents is about savings of about $1 million. That would be reinvested in the services that are in place at the colleges to directly help students. I believe that, so let me mention too that obviously, changes like this wouldn't, shouldn't, couldn't happen overnight, that there would be a transition phase where we plan implementation that would be phased in so that we may have the development of one of the regions in 2017 and perhaps two more in 2018. We have a great opportunity because we have, I have had vacancies in key positions. So we have a great opportunity now that we haven't had before and perhaps will not have again to bring change that is not more disruptive than necessary. The plan also doesn't impact the accreditation model that we have in place, where each college in our system is individually accredited. There is nothing being proposed that would impact accreditation. So the language in the resolution around the identity of the colleges, and preserving that and the unique culture of the colleges, that doesn't need to change. The primary changes then in terms of structure would be at the president level and then at some of the vice presidents' level. That is what we are considering now, and that is what we are proposing at this time. We're hoping also the regional approach leads to the consolidation of programs that may be redundant, but also allow us the opportunity to have the resources to offer new programs that may be needed by the community that today would be hard to do because simply we don't have the support from the state. And I think everyone in this room probably knows, the video showed that right now the state aid is at zero level and that we have limited resources that will be generated through tuition increases and property taxes, because we would like to keep those as low as possible as a way to be responsive to the communities that we serve. And so those are my comments, Mr. Gutierrez and members of the board. And I thank you for the opportunity to allow me to share the vision with our guests today.
Thank you, Chancellor. Are there any questions or comments by the board? If not, Mr. Burke.
We have reached a level of funding in the district. We've lost state aid. And the only way that we can raise new resources is through new construction, a tuition increase, or tax increase. New construction over the last two, three years has been leveled at about $8.5 million. And we expect about that much next year. I'm not speaking for the board, but from my end of the dais, I am not sensing a great deal of encouragement by board members to raise taxes or tuition. I would, but not everybody will. We are at a level point of funding. The board does, however, want to provide opportunity for citizens to get an education, both transfer and in workforce development and developmental education. And we want quality programs. We are at a place where we have to reallocate resources in order to maintain excellence. And I want to applaud the chancellor for being creative and beginning to think of ways that we can reallocate resources. And I think she's done it in a way that will provide good leadership in areas of the valley. And I'm pleased with what I'm seeing, and I appreciate what the chancellor has done.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Any other comments, questions? If not, ladies and gentlemen, let's move to the public hearing portion. Before we go there, I need to read you a missive from the Attorney General. Actually, before I do that, I'd like to make an introduction that I should have done at the very beginning. I'd like to introduce you to Governing Board Member-elect Dr. Linda Thor. Dr. Thor, if you'd stand. Thank you, Dr. Thor. Dr. Thor and Mr. Sarr are primarily responsible for the substitute, or the potential, possible substitute resolution that is before you. The citizen's interim is a missive from the Attorney General. This is an opportunity for the members of the public to address the governing board. In compliance with the open meetings law, the governing board will neither discuss nor take action on issues raised during this portion of the agenda. When necessary, issues will be taken under advisement and placed on a subsequent agenda. In this instance, you are assured that the item before you will be on a subsequent agenda. It will be scheduled in the first business meeting in January so that your comments directed to the resolution are in fact being heard. Let me stress again that one of the reasons there is a substitute amendment, a rather potential resolution, is because we heard you, because the board listened carefully. So I don't want you to think that because the Attorney General prohibits us from arguing with you, that somehow we're not listening. We are indeed listening. And had we not that restraint, we would have organized this in a different fashion. But there is that legal restraint upon us. So with that in mind... So with that in mind, I'm going to go through the list of people who asked to speak. If you, in the course of the next few minutes, you wish to be added, please sign one of these and bring them to Ms. Deanna. Would you please stand? Here in, Ms. Arceo, here in the first row. The first person is Ms. Chris. Yes. Yes, just let me explain. Ms. Arceo is going to be in charge of the time. We, as in Glendale, we will do that again. We will try and be as flexible as we can. If you have a few more moments of something important to say, and this buzzer buzzes, we will allow you that time. We won't allow you to go on for 44 minutes. That will be, that will put a stop to that. But if it's, if it's a few, one phrase or another, perhaps a paragraph, just let us know, and we will, we will allow that. The first person is Ms. Christina Bliss, representing the Classified Staff Council. Ms. Bliss.
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
No, if you get closer and louder.
I am, is that better? Okay, good. Okay. President Gutierrez, members of the board, Chancellor Harper Marinick, members of CEC, and fellow Maricopa County community members. My name is Chris Bliss, and I am the president of the Classified Staff Council, speaking on their behalf tonight. The council agrees with and supports nearly everything in your proposed resolution. Given our new council is the product of change and innovation, this resolution in concept is something we all embrace. The messages I have delivered on behalf of the council at governing board meetings, in one-on-one meetings with vice chancellors and college presidents, have consistently been those of helping to move the district and individual institutions forward, being active partners in the process. The council supports our chancellor and her transformation of the district. It's time. We are encouraged by the latest draft of the resolution. Last week, a brief survey was sent on behalf of the council to all classified employees to get their concerns directly from them. I received responses from 970 Maricopa employees in two days. Overwhelmingly, employees are concerned about their jobs. When they read about reductions in force, early retirement, and redeployment of employees, with no additional information or clarification, it justifiably causes concern. The other prominent concerns that emerged from the survey included the lack of transparency and communication from the governing board about what the plan is, what everything means, and lack of participation from employees in the process, what we normally think of as collaboration and shared governance. We encourage the governing board to provide additional information regarding the intent behind the resolution. Additionally, we would strongly recommend an amendment to the resolution that includes a language that speaks to the partnership and collaboration of all employee groups, classified staff, faculty, and adjunct faculty in this transformative process. We all believe in the mission of community colleges, and believe in Maricopa. We want to make it better. Let us be active partners in the process. Thank you.
Please. Dr. Sosa is representing the Faculty Executive Council.
Hello again. President Gutierrez, members of the board, chancellor, CEC, and members of the community. Good evening. I am Robert Sosa, and I'm here on behalf of the Maricopa County Community Colleges Faculty Executive Council. I have been asked by our district's faculty leadership to express our support of the board's and chancellor's vision of a more effective district. We are eager to participate in the evolution of this district, to share our collective expertise, and to help inform the forthcoming transformation. We also acknowledge that transformation introduces uncertainty. And as a faculty, we are prepared and willing to embrace that uncertainty in the pursuit of greater student access and success. We welcome the changes that will ensure that the district and its colleges are better able to serve our students, and that we become ever more responsive to our community's needs. As the system evolves, we offer our continued partnership, and understand that this transformation will require that faculty evolve as well. We look forward to those opportunities to improve our role on the front line of the district's educational mission. The Faculty Executive Council and the 10 college senators, alongside our colleagues on the Classified Staff Council, are community remaining strong, active partners throughout this time of change. With faculty and staff at the table, working with the chancellor, CEC, the board, and our community partners, we are confident that the coming transformation will result in positive change, positioning the district to be the colleges of choice for our community's workforce and general education needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sosa.
Good evening. Like the folks who preceded me, I'd like to congratulate the board and the chancellor for advancing this proposal. It seems to be moving in the right direction. But I'm here to talk about something I think is missing from the document. And first, let me introduce myself. I'd like to say my name is Gary Kleeman. I came to the valley in 1979, have been here, and over the period of time, I've had a chance to engage with several of the community colleges, Glendale Community College, Gateway, Chandler Gilbert, and most recently Mesa Community College. And since retirement, I've been a member of a group called New Frontiers for Lifelong Learning at Mesa Community College. This is a group of senior citizens who work with the college. We have over 400 members. The cost to the college is minimal. The group contributes about $32,000 a year to MCC. We give about, this last year, $5,000 in student scholarships to the students at Mesa Community College. And like I say, we have about 400 paying members who participate in this lifelong learning program. And that's what's missing from this document, is the term lifelong learning. There's nothing in here that talks about the importance of lifelong learning, although you do include it in your vision statement. You, but it's an important part. And for those of us who have been living in the valley and paying taxes for many, many years, and continue to pay taxes, and who are strong in voting, we would like to see lifelong learning included as part of your comments in the document somewhere. I'm not a document writer, so I can't tell you where to put it or anything like that, but would like to see lifelong learning mentioned in the document. I thank you very much.
You very much, and thank you very much for what you do. Heather Tyler, representing the Rio Salado Classified Staff. Ms. Tyler.
Good evening, board members, Maricopa employees, community members. I'm here tonight as a Classified Staff Council representative for Rio Salado College. I'm grateful for the opportunity to bring forward some of the concerns my fellow employees have brought to me in this particular role. And in short, I'll keep it to three simple bullet points that I've boiled it down to. First, employees are concerned that the process will not take into consideration them as individuals. As a whole, they acknowledge, and we've covered tonight, the value in this proposal, and people believe in it and want to move it forward, but they want to ensure that the process of moving forward doesn't leave them out as individuals. So specifically, people have been coming to me and making, wanting to make sure that there'll be a collaborative approach between HR, our governing board, and our employees, so that they also have buy-in at the table. Second, and Chris spoke to this a little bit, people are hungry for details. We're appreciative of the information that's coming out, and the lack of details, however, make people take the information in and make stories in their head that are a lot more scary than what's really out there. So I appreciate there's a lot of left to be sorted out in any of the plans, but specifically things, the retirement options, what's happening with their vacation, how are their PAQs affecting and impacting these things, all very personal and real things to them, that they want to just make sure that as this continues to move forward, there's more details. Finally, people want to ensure you, as our employers, that we've been along for the journey in good times and bad, and it's because we are here for the value of education. That's why people come to work in education. But they also are, they're tired, and they're stretched thin, and they're worried that some of the benefits that they've come here to enjoy might be going away. So we just want to ask that you're mindful in your approach, and keep communication in the forefront to your staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tyler. Dulce Angulo, Rio CSC.
Good evening, Mr. Gutierrez. Closer. Members of the board, Dr. Harper Marinick, Maricopa peers and community members, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. I have been a proud employee of Rio Salado College for the last 10 years, and I am also a unit representative for the Classified Staff Council for Rio Salado College. I'm here on behalf of my peers to echo their concerns on the governing board resolution draft that specifically mentions personnel adjustments, redeployment of staff, and reductions in force. We understand the need for action, the importance of evolving, innovating, and being responsive to the needs of our students and our community. We also support the change, support change, and are ready to do our part in the transformation of the Maricopa system. MCCD not only transforms the lives of its students, it also transforms the lives of its employees. This has always been an institution that promotes growth and development among its staff. It cares about the success of every employee. Maricopa has given so much to us, which is why we come to work every day, ready to do what we can to contribute to our mission. The overall reduction in resources has meant that we've all had to pick up additional duties and responsibilities. We're all doing a lot more with a lot less. But we understand that when things get tough, we have to come together, take action, and always keep moving forward. Every single one of our employees plays a key role in the success of the institution, and we cannot steer the ship without them. I ask that you please keep our staff in mind when making decisions. I invite you to talk to our employees and listen to their personal stories, their needs, and their concerns. You will see how proud they are to serve our students, and how proud they are to be a part of Maricopa. We have some of the most dedicated, hard-working, and brilliant minds working here. Let's make sure that their voices are heard, and that they feel valued. Let's work together to retain our talent, so we can all continue to grow and contribute to student success. Thank you.
Ms. Hernandez.
Good evening, President Gutierrez, members of the board, Chancellor Harper Marinick, and community members. I'm a new faculty member within the Maricopa system. This is my second year as a residential faculty member. But having studied leadership at an Ivy League institution, leadership within higher ed, I think what's of greatest concern to me is reducing the number of presidents overseeing the colleges. Because one thing that I have learned in my research is that leadership is key, and it's very important. We just elected a new chancellor, and I think that's evident to everyone in this room, that leadership is important. And splitting the presidents between two colleges is of great concern to me. Because building those relationships between faculty and staff, and the leadership there, and now reducing those opportunities for those relationships to prosper is of great concern, not only to me, but to other people in higher ed. The second concern I have about reducing the number of presidents is reducing the diversity that could exist in terms of vision and productivity within, on the campuses. And so one of the things we strive for is greater diversity amongst our leadership. And when you reduce the number of positions for leadership, then you've reduced the amount of diversity that could exist in there, in terms of vision and in terms of change. So I'm not speaking on behalf of Estrella Mountain, because I'm here to represent them, but I am a faculty member within Estrella Mountain. And I think that's something that we, that you as the board need to seriously consider, is what is the potential harm in reducing the number of leaders, and how that could affect the diverse perspectives that could happen within our campuses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Mr. Bill Rowe.
Good evening, President Gutierrez, members of the board, Chancellor Harper Marinick, and Doyle Burke. I'm Bill Rowe from The Textbook Company. I'm a product of Mesa Community College. I started The Textbook Company 30 years ago, and I'm here representing the textbook industry. And Doyle, you talked about raising taxes. I don't think we need to do that. I have a way that we could raise millions of dollars through the textbook stores, just slightly tweaking the textbook situation that's going on right now. There's millions of dollars literally leaving the state in the textbook industry, the way everything's, people are buying stuff on the internet, publishers selling directly to students. I think if you just slightly change the organization of the textbook deal, and I would be glad to help you with that, you could bring millions of dollars back into the district and leave it here, and create jobs here, instead of having it all leave the state. So, thank you.
Reggie Monroe, students, employee, and community learning environment.
I'm just the end user, so I'm going to start with the students. Dr. Gutierrez, Mr. Gutierrez, Dr. Harper Marinick, and members of the board, and everybody that's here tonight. How many of you are students? And I'll stay standing, because I'm a student, too. This semester, I enrolled in a nine-credit EMT course, where I attend class four and a half hours twice a week, on Mondays and Wednesdays. And after class, I go to my day job as the chair of the Biology Division at Chandler Gilbert. And after that, I go home, stopping at Sprouts, because, you know, I like to invest in my community and get my tax dollars there. And then every now and then, I have to put my faculty hat back on, because I always ask the cashier, are you a student? Do you go to college? What are you doing with yourself? And usually, they're like, well, yeah, or sometimes if they say no, then I tell them about our colleges and what we do, and that if she hasn't thought about college, we're the place for her. Because we're where we can help her discover what her path is going to be if she hasn't figured that out yet, and that it's our job to do what we can to help them connect with their community in that sense. I tell her about our small class sizes, our environment, our clubs, our athletic teams, and our partnerships with our universities and our employers. And then I stop and tell her that I just went back to school, and that it made a big difference for me, because I was also uncertain of whether I was good enough and whether I would belong. I'm one of two females in a class of 24 for the EMT program, and I can tell you that I do belong because of the environment that our district and our colleges have created for our students. And it's really important to me that, as you all are going through and devising this vision of the reorganization, what's really, really important to me is that as you form that operational plan that's going to restructure what happens down here, because we live in the weeds, and we like the weeds because they flower, that we're the ones who are going to be impacted as we see it the most, because we don't know. And what I see in my classroom every day when I teach anatomy and physiology, and what I see when I'm learning how to give somebody oxygen because they're having difficulty breathing, these are the things that are going to matter down the road. And so keep that in mind, because the people that stood up in here just now, when I asked who was a student, you need to talk to them first, and ask them what makes them succeed. And that's what's going to have the greatest impact, I think, in influencing your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Monroe. Mr. Wayne Ballmer. Mr. Ballmer.
Good evening. My name's Wayne Ballmer, and President Gutierrez, members of the board, Chancellor Harper Marinick. I wanted to really touch on three points tonight, in the, as far as time goes. First is, I saw on your original draft, and hopefully it's on your revised draft, line 68 through 70, identifying the community colleges with their local communities. We had that issue earlier on about rebranding, reimaging colleges. I hope this puts that to rest, that each college would still be seen as a freestanding institution. Second is, I noticed in your region issue, that for the east, for the north, the west, and the south, you paired kind of a major college with a minor college, as I would call them. them, the named colleges and the smaller colleges, to try to come up with a group. And that group has probably equal number of students, funding, staff, that sort of thing. But I noticed the one in the east valley, you've got Mesa and Chandler Gilbert together, probably two of your larger colleges, and each one of those colleges has branch campuses. You know, Mesa's got Red Mountain, and Chandler Gilbert's got the Gateway one, and one down in Queen Creek. Wouldn't it make some sense to say you have an east and a southeast, because you have these two large colleges, instead of putting them together to one district, making them two, because they each have branches? I mean, it would seem that gives a little bit more balance in terms of student enrollment, budget, staff, to have one president over those two large colleges, to have two, because they have subsidiary colleges of their own. And then the third point I just wanted to touch on was something that Mr. Burke mentioned, which was the three sources of revenue. I think there's another source of revenue out there, and it's fundraising. If we looked at what other colleges are doing around the nation that have been successful, there might be some models that we could adapt to say, what can we do to raise private sector funding in the community? One of those I just became aware of is naming rights. You know, you could name facilities or parts of facilities for people who want to invest. I'm a student at Mesa Community College, and there's the wellness building there. If it was the banner wellness building, you know, that might be a way to raise funding that would help that program. So those are the three points I wanted to touch on. One was maintaining the identity. Second was maybe thinking of an east and southeast, because of the size of those two schools and the complexity they have. And then the third was the option for additional fundraising. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ballmer. Dr. Michael Cowan, Mesa Public Schools. Dr. Cowan, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. President, members of the Board, Chancellor, thank you so very much for the opportunity to share a couple of comments with you. I'm normally on that side of the table, so the idea to speak is a unique opportunity for me. I want you to know that, as the Superintendent of Mesa Public Schools and the future MCC and Community College students in your district, we applaud the focus on innovation, we focus on the focus of transformation. You know, this is a different time for education, for us in K-12, as well as for you and our community college system. And we just want you to know that we look forward to working with a system that is thoughtful under the direction of a wonderful chancellor, that guides and supports partnerships, continues to help build relationships between our organizations and your organizations, and being responsive to the students, as the chancellor mentioned, in ensuring that our students have pathways and experiences that will be enriching to them and meaningful to our community. We just applaud you for your thoughtfulness, and we welcome the opportunity to partner with you as you continue to explore innovation and transformation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cowan. That completes the yellow request sheets before me. If there are no other request sheets, this is like an auction, going once, going twice. You're sure you're not going to regret going home, saying to yourself, I should have said, and there she is, please come forward. Thank you. Dr. Nieset, Chandler Gilbert faculty. Dr. Nieset.
President of the Board, members of the Board, Chancellor, and assembled colleagues. The one piece that I would like to share is, as counseling faculty in particular, that the idea of regionalization sometimes means different things to us than some of the things that I hear from students. I have students that are interested in pursuing careers that are available at some of our other community colleges, Mesa, Gateway, Scottsdale. And although, to me, to get in my car and drive all the way up to those schools, maybe 15 or 20 minutes, seems reasonable, sometimes that's not necessarily the case. Some of them, between, in terms of their family responsibilities, their work responsibilities, getting in the car and driving that far, sometimes in terms of their transportation, I have students that can't get to Chandler Gilbert sometimes, because there's nothing on the bus line that goes there. So in terms of the privilege in which, when we think about regionalization, that was the one thing that I would like to share, is that we think about online how easy it is for students to get to different colleges, and sometimes combining across the district and saying, well, there's going to be one in the north, one in the east, one in the west, might not necessarily be matching the actual transportation resources of some of our students.
Thank you, Dr. Nieset. If there are no further requests to speak, that completes the citizens' interim. Let me close and then ask other members of the Board if they wish to make a statement. But let me say the following. Clearly, there has been dramatic changes in the funding of the community colleges, and clearly, there has been dramatic changes in the workforce and in the nature of the workforce and in the extraordinarily rapid way in which it is constantly changing and transmogrifying. And clearly, we have to be able to respond to that. The kind of long-term planning that was available to us 15 and 20 years ago, frankly, even five years ago, when funding was still at a relatively high level, is no longer available to us, and I think creativity is demanded at this point. I want to stress, at least for my part, speaking as one member of this Board, fighting for funding is not over. We're going to continue to fight with the legislature and try and make them see the extraordinary value of community colleges. We're not giving up. On the other hand, I think it is realistic nonetheless to change, to meet the need as we see it today. Let me explain something about our Board. This is not a prescriptive board. We do not administer or manage on a day-to-day basis the district. It is our role to set policy, it is our role to work with the chancellor and adopt a vision, and assure that that vision is met. And that is what we are doing today, and that's what we will be doing in the future. It is the chancellor's role to then take that vision and, on a day-to-day basis, make it real, accomplish that vision, and that's what she will be doing when we adopt this. The resolution itself calls for constant monitoring, and I want to assure you of that. I especially want to assure Classified Staff of that. There have been the greatest concerns there, that somehow this means that we're not going to move lands anymore, or maintain our buildings, or maintain our IT staff, or maintain a myriad of activities that are necessary to operate 10 extraordinary colleges that have gained constantly, on a continuous basis, recognition for national excellence. That will be done. We are not walking away as a Board from our responsibility to assure that everything possible will be done to assure that each and every one of you is going to be treated with the greatest respect. Obviously, as the chancellor mentioned, this will not be implemented in the flash. It will be over time. It will evolve, and we will be monitoring that evolution and hearing reports on that evolution on a monthly basis. I want to assure you that those reports will occur in public, and we will be seeing this in real time, and you will all be invited to those meetings, at our regular meetings, and our, what we call agenda review meetings, where a discussion in fact takes place. And we will be inviting you to those. It's in a relatively small room, so we may have to get a bigger one. But I am serious, we will be sending out invitations to everyone to come and hear those reports, to come and understand what is going on, because this is exceedingly important to all of us. Dr. Monroe mentioned the number of students who are here. I want to assure them that the only reason to do this, the only reason to do this, the only reason to review our colleges and to think about a better and more efficient and more direct way to provide services is for student success. That's why we're doing this, for student success. And we will be monitoring to assure that it, in fact, is arriving at that goal. If it isn't arriving at that goal, the savings isn't worth it. The savings is only worth it if that savings can be reinvested in our students to guarantee their success. So I want to thank you very much for coming here this evening. I want to again challenge you to follow this process the course of the next year or so. It will not be implemented immediately, it will evolve, it demands your constant input in order for it to be an evolution, a transformation of excellence. Is there further comments from the Board? Mr. Sarr.
First of all, let me encourage all of our students that next week is finals.
You want them to go home?
And we're going to get out early, so you can go home and study. But student success is the reason we're here. We have a billion-dollar budget, 10,000 or more employees, and all of that is in place for nothing more than to make sure that we have students who are successful in whatever they do. And student success comes in many flavors and many sizes, one of which, if we're in Mesa, the Mesa football team won their Valley of the Sun Bowl, I've got to say that, last And success in athletics is rampant in our district, nationwide, we're well-known for that. But we are also well-known for a lot of other things in this country. We get a chance to travel a little bit and speak with governing board members and administrators from colleges throughout the United States. We're not only known as being big, which we are, we are known for innovation, and most known in the last few years for our ability to successfully transfer our students' credentials from the community colleges to four-year institutions, not just here in Arizona, but nationwide. They look to us as amazingly successful in getting those pathways established for our students. There are other areas that we excel in that could spend the entire night. We all know that you're all associated with the colleges in one way or another. I really appreciate the organizations that support us, in Mesa especially, since we're here, the East Valley Partnership, as you heard a couple others. Working with our K-12 institutions is something that we always need to do a better job of. They're struggling, as we all know. There are 2,000 teachers short in the state as we speak, in classrooms, using substitute teachers that are non-credential. We've got to work with them to make sure that we can support them, and that those students that come to us, come to us with college-level skills. We know that that's an issue, we know that that is part of our mission, is to provide those remedial opportunities for those students who come to us with deficiencies, to make sure that they not only get through those in the quickest and most effective way, but that, once they get through that and into the 100-level courses, that they are continuing to be successful. So I just want to stress the fact that student success are the two words that we base everything on. Thank you.
Ms. Haber.
As someone who's relatively new to the Board, I've been on the Board for two years, and I was a teacher in many different capacities for 32 years, something that has really impressed me is the willingness of the people in this district to monitor themselves, to really watch what's going on, and not to congratulate themselves all the time, whereas many times they deserve to congratulate, but to always look at what could be done a little bit better. And I'm quite certain in this transformation, we will continue that. We're not going to be so into this that we are not paying attention as to how it is affecting the teachers, the students especially. And so I think we will continue to work along as we have in the past, and we will continue to be successful, because we're always paying attention to what we're doing and asking just how well it really is working.
If there are no further comments, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Drive home carefully, and this meeting is adjourned.